Call to order the May 14th meeting of the Concord Select Board. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes from February 24th, March 9th, March 13th, March 19th, 26th, April 2nd, and April 9th. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Move to approve the meeting minutes for February 24th, 2020, March 9th, 13th, 19th, and 26th for 2020, and April 2nd and 9th for 2020.
Second.
Second.
Look, please call and roll.
Ms. Hodgson.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Lawson.
Hi.
Myself, Lindesquibato, hi.
I note that they're passing unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the update from the town manager. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Thank you for being here. Got quite a bit to get through, so I'll try and be brief. I'll start with what Mike just mentioned. There was a call today with, through, facilitated by the Massachusetts Municipal Association with, about information that had been released by the Division of Local Services, DLS, and it is CARES Act, which is a federal act that gives money directly to states to help manage responses to COVID-19 pandemic that were unexpected. The state has a formula that they use to create an allocation, and so Concord has a preset allocation of funds available that's based on population. Since, really since the very beginning of all of this, we've been tracking our COVID-related expenses. Tom Judge, I think in early March, set up a smart sheet that each department can enter expenses in, whether it be additional overtime, or additional purchase of PPE, or, you know, additional cleaning, or something like that. All those are, it's a pretty broad range of eligible expenses. The municipal executive has the discretion on how to seek reimbursement for those funds, but obviously, will be, the SMT will be working on determining what we think is eligible. There's also FEMA funds that are out there as well, so there'll be a couple pots of money to seek reimbursement. The call today, I thought, was very positive. I think it gives us a little bit more confidence in exploring new things that we think we're going to need to do to reopen, which we can talk about under that agenda item, but we know we're going to incur costs, and new costs that weren't planned or budgeted, and we know that there's also going to be pressure on our revenues, which we'll talk about in a little bit as well. And so it's good to know that there is some relief through this funding for, related to our response. So, that was positive news. I think you also saw the other positive news. Our bond rating was, our AAA bond rating was, we got rerated again. It's very, by Moody's, it's excellent news, and really a credit to the financial management of the community. I do want to share my screen for a minute, because one of the things we did was, we know we're going to have to start increasing our signage. We had talked about that. We'd heard some feedback on, but we want to make sure we got it right. And we, there's a lot of new kind of infographics going around now, and we, but we also wanted something that was somewhat, that we could relate to locally, that would grab your attention, and maybe even have a little fun with it. So, let me just do this. So I'll just go through these quickly. This is one, like, from the CDC, which goes through why wearing two masks and staying six feet apart is so important for reducing the spread of the virus. This is a, one that is, can be standard for notifying people of the Board of Health face covering order. This, we fully expect that as we go forward, both employees and customers will need to wear masks going in and out of, going into town facilities. So this one is to, you know, you'd see this by a door to advise people to wear a mask. This is kind of fun. We wanted to kind of capture the spirit of Concord and have it be relatable locally, and the Concord Minutemen were very generous in participating in a photo shoot done by Aaron Stevens. Like I said, we want people to notice this. We want people to be able to relate to it locally, and some infographics, just, there's a million of them, and I'm just concerned people won't really get the message. And so this is one that's a little more fun, and really highlighting the need to wear a mask or face covering. This one's a little more of the standard fare. Again, another infographic explaining why social distancing and, you know, covering those amounts is important. And then this one would be another one for town buildings. And then this one is, you know, and it's, I guess, to me, there's something compelling about this image, because that spirit of, you know, of what the Minutemen really were, setting aside what is going on in your normal life to fight for something that is kind of bigger than all of us, you know, that really, not to be hokey about it, but that spirit really resonates with me on this, because it is definitely, it's a different kind of fight, but it's still a battle that we are engaged in, and people do need to really put aside, at times, what is good for their personal lives, to fight for something that really is important to all of us. And then this is another infographic for, that really details the face covering. So, that's one of the things, kind of a next phase thing that we're focused on, and getting that information out. I don't know if the board had any feedback on that. And again, I do want to thank the Concord Minutemen for their willingness to help us do that.
I just want to say, I love those ones with the Minutemen. They're perfect. I really commend everybody who worked on that. I think they're creative, they get your attention, they're unique to Concord, striking the right tone. I think it's great.
Great, thanks, Erin.
Will we be, will there be a list anywhere for people coming in, or, let's say, somebody walks into a store and doesn't have a mask? Is it, is there a way of directing, even link to all the different places you can get a mask made? I'm just concerned about some people who don't seem to have access to masks.
I can comment on that. I was at the West Concord Pharmacy, and they do have masks, the NK95s, and then the, just the, you know, the blue ones that you see. And I was also at, taking, getting takeout at Dino's in West Concord, and I was in my car, and there was a man walking in. He didn't have a mask on, and it says right on the door, he must have a mask, and then I saw him walking out again. So, the stores were enforcing it, and they are available some places.
So, if I can respond to Jane, I think the big thing people need to bear in mind is it does not have to be a surgical mask. I think we talked about this last time. I wear a bandana around my neck, and I pull it up over my nose and mouth when I'm out and about, because it's reusable, it's washable, and it's, you know, something that's easy. So, I mean, everyone, I mean, everyone has a face covering in their home that will do the job, whether it's a t-shirt, or scarf, or something. And so, there are times where I think masks are a little better, and a little more convenient, a little easier to deal with, but it really is a face covering of at least two layers of cloth that are the big thing. I will say that we did have a conversation with the Economic Vitality Committee the other night, and we are, the town, obviously, has been in the business of both purchasing masks, hand sanitizers, things like that, for several, for a couple of months now, and we are having a discussion at the department level of how we can provide some of that, either guidance on how to get it, or if we have some that we can spare, to give to local businesses. And we're, I think we have, I don't want to say until I've nailed it down, but I, we did get one order of cloth masks, that I think there was a mistake in the order, and we got way more than we thought we were going to get. And so, we have an opportunity, I think, to maybe reach out to the business community, because those are, those are perfect for shop owners and employees, because they are washable and reusable. The cheaper, kind of, you know, paper, kind of surgical masks, you know, having those available for customers if needed, you know, is going to be important, but I also, I think there's a limit to how much we want to be in the distribution of free PPE, because it is getting expensive, and we're going to be, we're going to be using them for, like I said, many months, so.
My question to you, Stephen, was not that Concord bears the responsibility to provide anybody who walks into our town with a mask, but that the, I am worried about the, especially the small business owners, having this be yet another responsibility, where they have to decide at the, at the door, if they don't have extra masks, to turn a customer away.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, like I said, I think there's going to be a strategy, and we can talk about this more in the reopening part, but the economic, if you watch the Economic Vitality Committee meeting, we did talk a lot about it, and I think that we're, we're working on a strategy that I honestly don't think will take that long to put into place, it's just making sure we understand, you know, all of the variables, and really the level of need, in terms of, like, how many masks does an individual business need, and kind of getting an inventory of that. So, just a couple other quick things. We are working on, we're starting probably next week, we're, we doing the recruitment for a new CIO, and so you may see that advertised, that's an essential position, and that'll be probably, that process probably takes several months, but we are getting it started. This, I think there'll be, there'll be something on it in Miss Lainey's correspondence, but this, this week is unique, because it is, or sorry, next week is APWA, American Public Works Week. This week is actually National Police Week, and I think tomorrow is the Police Memorial Day for officers who have been killed in line of duty. And so I think hats, flags will be lowered to half-staff in honor of the Police Memorial Day. We are, a couple of non-COVID things that are kind of exciting. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Phase 2B is going to start construction pretty soon. They have a mass DOT is funding that, and they have a contract signed with the general contractor, so that's ready to go. I think we've seen the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail has been a very popular recreational amenity, so I think it'll be, I think this will be a great addition to that project. The other thing is, we're working, is, in our, in our desire to get more teleconnected with people, we have an e-permitting software that DPLM has been implementing for some of their things, that can be used also for permits, for tracking permits for, you know, smoke, smoke detector inspections for the fire department, health inspections, you know, building inspection, so that, that's, it's one of those behind-the-scenes initiatives that's actually going to, I think, not only save the town a lot of time, but also allow us to build a great, easy-to-use database of work going on. Carrie can talk a little bit about the permanent, the bids that we went out to for bonding. Carrie, you want to jump in on that?
So yesterday, we put bids on $5,665,000 in permanent financing, and $3 million in temporary financing. For the second year in a row, the bids that we received on the 10-year notes came in better than the one year, or the 10-year bonds better than the one-year note. So, proof that the economy truly is messed up, I think, with those, with those bids. So, the, the net interest cost on the 10-year bonds is 0.848%. We received about $950,000 in premium. About $740,000 of that will be used to resize or reduce the issue, so saving taxpayers a good amount on an annual basis. This was brought to you next week for permanent acceptance, but we wanted to provide this information to you, because it's, it's great news in these uncertain times, that we're still able to get very attractive rates on, really both short-term and long-term borrowing, but particularly our long-term borrowing.
You're muted, Stephen.
So, there was an issue that we were notified with, that I think the board has had a history with, which is the dog owned by a family in West Concord, that was, I think the board had imposed some orders some time ago. The police, the police department did investigate, they did issue a citation, but at this time, the chief is not recommending further action. And if you have questions about that, feel free to reach out to me, and I can let you know the chief's thinking on that, but he thinks it's settled for the time being. Speaking of the police, because it's so much strangely, because there's fewer cars on the road, we see a lot of, there's actually been, seen an increase in speed, especially where Route 2 goes through Concord. And so the police has been, the police have been stepping up their radar patrols for speed, and they're especially focusing on areas where they know there are a lot of pedestrians and cyclists. So if you see, if you see increased rates of speed in your neighborhood, just let the police know, and they can, they can do some patrolling in there. And I think, so I also asked Kate to maybe provide a brief update on senior services, and how things are going for the Council on Aging.
Hi, everyone. Kate Hodgson, Deputy Town Manager. So Harvey Wheeler closed officially to seniors on March 12th, and for about a week thereafter, van service continued, only for medical appointments. The director, assistant director, and social workers remained full-time, in-house, working, and others were assigned to home. The outreach functions, including making regular contact with 700-plus seniors on our caseload, continued weekly, and the clinical staff now are basically stationed at home, thanks to a phone system workaround that we were able to get with, with the new telecom director, and Dave Wood, the director of the light plant, who's also serving as our temporary CIO. So, the clinical staff are able to make daily calls on their active client and participant lists, and to date, have logged nearly 2,000 calls since the March 12 shutdown. The social work staff meets weekly via Zoom with each other, and the Concord Police Liaison Tia Manchuso. We continue to let seniors know about the food giveaway that is taking place at the Concord High School, and Tia has been delivering food to seniors who have no way to get to this high school. And also, we have sent her a couple of times when we thought that someone needed a face-to-face checkup, based on a call or something that we had, and she's sort of able to deliver the food and give somebody the once-over, which has been helpful. When masks were announced as recommended, and then later required, several communities members stepped up, and they actually began making and donating several homemade masks to COA. And so what we did was, picked those up, washed them, and then brought them over to the high school to be put into the grocery bags for seniors. But we also put out, and the social workers were telling seniors that if they didn't need groceries, but were in need of a mask, all they needed to do was let us know. And so, to date, we've given out more than 100 of those, which is great. And so then, a couple of weeks ago, after we had gotten the telephone system working, and we felt like we were doing well by our client load, it was becoming increasingly obvious that we were not going to get back to business as usual anytime soon, and so we wanted to make sure that we were taking care of not only the mental health, but physical health. And so, providing exercise on a semi-social platform, we had a Zoom that was dedicated to the Council on Aging, and we now have two accounts for Council on Aging. And so we're able to virtually host many of the activities that we had been doing at the COA, and some smaller educational opportunities, which essentially work for those who are, have a computer at home and have internet access, to sort of keep them engaged with one another. Some of these folks, you know, they live alone, and so this is the only contact that they have. And I could say that primarily, these past two weeks have been spent walking people through how to use the Zoom application. It's a, it's a new thing, so. So we are working on a sort of a cheat sheet that has the screenshots, and that should be done soon. So we continue to receive regular calls for service, and social service staff. They've been working really hard, and I just think, you know, we, Concord is really blessed to have such dedicated social workers. These people can't wait to get back to work. They miss their clients, they miss the atmosphere, and so, you know, I can't say enough good things about them. They're a wonderful group of workers.
Thanks, Kate. Sorry, go ahead, Jane.
I was just going to say, it sounds like that cheat sheet might be something that we could publicize, or that many of us could use with our older parents or friends that need Zoom lessons. So there's probably a market value there.
We'll sell it to you cheap.
Thanks. Awesome.
Yeah, I think it's, I said this at the Economic Vitality Committee meeting, like, two months ago, no one had ever, no one that I'm aware of had even had a meeting on Zoom, and now we're on it every day, all day. It's a really amazing pivot, I think, for society, but I think as an organization as well. And so anyway, just one last thing, and this is kind of a, I know, I know the reopen thing isn't, that discussion's later in the agenda, but we did get, you know, a letter from some residents about reopening some of the park and facilities, and I think one of the things that, you know, we, in fact, this was based on discussion that we had earlier today at SMT. We know people love the conservation lands and the trails, but we're also seeing use of those conservation areas in ways that really aren't appropriate, you know, bicycle tracks and jumps and things like that being created, and that really isn't what they're intended for. And someone made the comment that, there are a lot of beautiful quiet streets in Concord that are, that are perfectly suitable for a nice walk, and that, so if there, if there are crowds at the trails and in the conservation lands, you can usually go for a walk in a neighborhood very safely, and both safe, safety from a, you know, pedestrian standpoint, but also safely from a social distancing standpoint. The other thing I want to mention, and then I'll leave it at this, is I think the governor has been talking a lot the last couple of weeks about hospital capacity and regular procedures, and people, you know, if you're sick or need to go to the hospital for something non-COVID-related, they, you know, the state focused on building out the capacity to be able to handle those cases, and keep people separate from patients who may have COVID-19. Chief Tom Judge reported today that in looking at the run rates for the EMS services that, for the town of Concord, those numbers are off, and we believe that it is a reflection of that idea that people are reluctant to go to the hospital in the middle of COVID-19. And I just want to kind of remind the community that, you know, Emerson Hospital does have the capacity to treat people who don't have COVID-19, and protect those patients from people who may be infected. And so, you know, it's a reminder, if you, if you have surgeries, that maybe they're elective, maybe they're not, but if you have health issues that need to be addressed, please, you know, reach out to our EMS, you know, and don't be afraid to go to the hospital. And it's not, it's not about, you know, revenue for EMS or for hospitals, it's about making sure that everyone is staying healthy, and we don't have unintentional negative health consequences because of a, a perception about where our healthcare system is, when it really is a much better position to handle those things. I guess, I think now's the time, because we, I mean, hopefully, we have flattened the curve, and we won't have a resurgence, but the longer you wait, if we do have a resurgence, the situation could be even worse down the line. So, you know, right now, things are pretty good, and especially Emerson is managing very well. And so I would echo the governor's message that, you know, if you have, if you have, if you have a need to go to the hospital, definitely go. So, with that, I'll open up the questions, or?
I have a comment and a question first on the, the coronavirus relief fund that called you around. You made mention of the monies that's available, but I just would point out to my colleagues that it's money available for both current and the next fiscal year. So it's an attempt to provide funds for those towns who might need it to balance their budgets or make expenditures now, but also for the next fiscal year. And then the question I have for you, Stephen, is have the, the governor's stay-at-home order expires Monday, I think. Have you heard anything that would indicate whether or not he's going to let it expire, or whether he's going to extend it?
I have not, and I missed his conference today. We were on, I was on another meeting, unfortunately, and I haven't seen the newspaper about what he said, but he, when, at his press conference yesterday, he did seem to indicate that he was going to be making, I think, a significant announcement on Monday about the state of the order. I guess if I was a betting man, I would bet that there'll be some, it'll be, continue to be a modified stay-at-home advisory. I think he's made it clear that it's going to be data-driven, and it's not going to be all at once, so I'm eagerly anticipating that, that press conference, and that announcement, and like I said, I think we have, we talking about how we're going to be looking at local operations in a bit, but yeah, I don't know. Mike, I wish I did.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Jane, do I see your hand?
I, yeah, I was just going to add to what Stephen just said. If it's any indication, I was on a Zoom, I was at a Zoom meeting of the multi-town gas leaks forum, at which National Grid was the major participant, and because many of the plans that this group had been formed to work on have been put aside versus the emergency needs of, of all, especially a utility like National Grid, some of the tidbits you got, I got from that discussion, which I thought were important, are, for instance, National Grid has made the corporate determination that all, that most of its employees, in other words, the non-emergency responders, will be working from home throughout the summer, and, and very possibly longer. So that's already a corporate decision by one of the larger employers. So I don't know where that fits into the, into the crystal ball, but those are, you know, indicators.
Thank you. And are there other questions from the board? Right, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Middle School Building Committee Recommendation. Tim, I, are you with, or you are?
I'm going to unmute. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come before the board and talk about some issues with the Middle School Building Committee. I, it was interesting, I was listening to your report, Stephen. I was a selectman in Carlisle for 15 years, and it brought back a lot of memories. Other than, other than Zoom and COVID, a lot of issues are timeless, and a lot of things I remember about being a selectman. But I would also say, with that experience, I would, I would like to express appreciation for the work that you all are doing during this crisis. I, you know, there's so much work that is involved with being a selectman on a normal time, and I can only imagine all the things that, and crises that you have to deal with and meet about. So, thank you all for the work that you have been, and will put in on that. My co-chair is here, Don Giarriello, and I just saw Lori is here, Lori Hunter, as you, you know, the superintendent of schools, and there are two other members of our committee, Susan Bates and Stephen Crane. So, hopefully, we don't have a quorum, but we have, we have a good representation here. As you know, we've been working on the project, about 17 people on our committee have been working on the project with our partners, Hiller International and SMMA Architects, for about the past 10 months. And we've made progress, we were making good progress, and then we continue to make progress through the, through the, through Zoom time, but it's, as you are aware, it's harder and harder. And today, at our meeting, we, we took a significant step. We voted to take a pause for a little while in the project. I sent over a couple documents related to that, but I thought I just might read that motion. Okay, so you're aware of what we decided today? And then I can, we can comment a little, or maybe more efficiently, we can answer any questions that you might have. So I'll just read what we decided today.
Feel free to read it, but it was distributed to.
All right, everybody has read it? Okay, great. That's fine. That, that will save some boring TV time. What we have decided is to take a pause in our project, and there are really three reasons. One is smaller, that it is just very difficult to do this work, this collaborative work related to design in this environment, where you're limited to Zoom meetings. There's a, we're getting down to the point now where we're, we're closer to the design, and there's a lot, if you know that work, it's interactive, it's looking at design alternatives at small meetings, it's being able to share opinions very rapidly, and go back and forth related to alternatives, and that is very difficult. We've, we've We've, we've persevered through this and we've actually are reasonably on schedule with what the original schedule was. But that's one reason, that's a small reason. The two large reasons that are motivating this pause is number one, we're nearing a time where we're going to be making some very crucial decisions about the project. As I'm sure you all are aware, this is a huge project for Concord in a financial sense. So there's great interest in it, no matter what, okay? But Concord has chosen to also be fairly aggressive on a number of areas. One is sustainability. So we're looking at aggressive sustainability as part of the building. And there's great interest in that, but there's also interest in the cost aspects of that. We understand that, so that's one issue. There is, because this is the last building of this round of schools built, there's considerable interest in a number of areas that are not purely school activities in this building, okay? The, the, there is a strong interest from a number of different directions relating to athletic facilities and the size of the gymnasium. We're receiving a ton of input about, we have received a ton of input about that. There is also, because the music program is so dynamic in Concord, including the middle school, there is a large group of, of parents in the communities that are very interested in the auditorium, the size and nature of the auditorium. So we received a lot of input on that. And we've developed, we've developed alternatives related to both of those things. But we're at a point where we really need a robust discussion with the community and other town boards relating to those features. And it's almost impossible to do that now because you, you can't bring people together for a forum. The electronic versions are reasonable, but they're very cumbersome. And when you have large numbers of people, they're cumbersome back and forth. You can dispense a lot of information well, but it's very difficult to get dialogue in there. So as we are at the point of finishing feasibility, you're, you're basically deciding on a specific alternative that you're going to do a schematic design for. This is where you develop the detail, the more detailed design and costing that you're going to put before the town for the funding of the construction phase. In deciding upon that alternative, it's really incumbent that we have those discussions and make those decisions about the key element.
Tim, you froze up on us.
I'm not sure what to do.
You're back.
Okay. And anyway, it's very difficult to have that dialogue with the town and, and the other town boards right now. The second thing is financial, and it's basically the uncertainty. We know, I think we all know that there are going to be significant economic impacts of the crisis that we're facing at all levels of government, federal government for sure. But the state is going to have budget shortfalls and the towns are going to have to be under significant pressure, pressure to maintain services in light of perhaps falling fee revenue, fee state aid revenue and perhaps tax revenue. So we are members of the building committee, we're also citizens. And, and trying to do the right thing in terms of putting this significant expenditure out at a time where there's significant ambiguity and, and question is something that we are concerned with. So for those two reasons, we've decided to take a pause. And by a pause means we'll stop the activity with the, our partners, the OPM and the architects. They will in two weeks have produced a report, a feasibility report. And then we will consider on a month-to-month basis when we start up again, when the conditions warrant, when we are in a position to effectively communicate with the town and other town boards. And secondly, we feel that the, that we're financially ready to put what is going to be a significant request from the town in front of a special town meeting. So that's what we have voted unanimously to do in our committee. And I think probably the best thing is to answer questions or other people on the committee can also comment on it. But that's, that's sort of where we are right now. It's, it's a very tough thing. I spoke with every member of our committee personally and, and talked a little bit about this. And I can tell you that the commitment to the project is, is great or greater than ever. From the work we've done, we, we absolutely believe that the strategy that we have to combine the buildings and build a single middle school at Sanborn is the right thing to do. And it continues to be very much needed. And secondarily, from our work, I think everybody is very excited about what we can do with the building in terms of a new level of educational offering to middle schoolers. In, in terms of the great public, the great program that Concord currently offers, but using the facility to help facilitate a team learning approach that Dr. Hunter can talk much more eloquently than I about. But we're, we're, one, we're very committed to it, the need. And we're excited about what we've seen and what we can do for the building in Concord. So we can't really, I mean, we, we really want to get back to it. But we believe that we need this pause to get beyond some of these constraints that the virus has put in front of us. So with that, I'll either, either any of my colleagues would like to say anything. But I think time is well spent and any questions that you all might have for the action that we've taken.
And first, let me ask other members of the, of the Middle School Building Committee if they have anything to add to Tim's remarks.
I'm assuming, Tim, that when you talk about a pause, that at this point, it really is an undefined pause.
Yes.
With no, with no conjecture?
No, I mean, you know, there are, we of course think about what the potentials are, you know? I mean, the, the, if, well, as we take this pause, it's not, it's not going to be possible to do the town, the fall town meeting and election, okay? We would, we would not have time to execute the schematic design in that timeframe. So the next opportunity, most probably, and I know things are in flux, so I'm, we're, we're just talking generally, would be the spring town meeting. To be ready for that, we would have to be going again by about September in order to complete the schematic design to be ready for the spring. So it is month to month in terms of assessing where we are. But that's, that's sort of a backdrop that might be helpful there.
Thank you.
Let me again, before I turn to Carrie, ask if other members of the building committee have any comments that they'd like to make. Susan?
I just wanted to add, one of the things that has come up in our meeting, I believe, information from Carrie is that after the next, August 1st is the next tax, property tax due date. And perhaps there'll be a better sense then of, you know, is it going to stay strong in the 99s? Or is it going to, is that going to be different? And that'll really inform finances since most of our budget is, is from property, is funded by property tax. That's it.
Dawn?
Yes, thank you. I think it's worth noting as well, on the heels of Susan's point, that by the end of the summer, August, September, we'll have a better handle on how this pandemic will affect the construction industry. So we'll have, I know I personally have a couple of projects that have a 60% estimate around that time. So our estimators are forever, you know, keeping their information updated. It's right now too early to know the impact, but I think in a couple of months, we'll start to see, hopefully, what the estimators are forecasting as impactful and how that might affect our project and its timeframe. So just worth noting that, you know, with time, we'll hopefully have more information.
Thank you. Eleanor, is there any additional questions from the board? Carrie?
Yeah, I have a comment. I was able to watch on the MFM, the last few meetings, 23rd and 30th of the Middle School Building Committee. And I just wanted to say how thankful I am of all the talent that's on the committee, particularly appreciating Dawn tactfully challenging the cost per square foot and other items. And Tim, with your excellent time management, keeping the committee on track was no easy thing. And I think you've made a really good decision to pause, both for the reasons that you've outlined, but also, if I may suggest one other reason that I talked with Dawn a little bit about. One of the reasons to push for moving forward on this project quickly was the estimated six or 7% construction escalation that we had been seeing for a while. And now with this economy, we really don't know what's going to be happening. So I think part of being financially ready and presenting to the town is going to be to be able to have solid bid data, which we won't have for a few months at least. So I think you've made a wise decision, thank you.
Comments by the board? I just want to state as a technicality, a couple of things before, before I do that though. In addition to the, sort of the motion that you sent along today, there was a two-page description of the building committee's response to the virus crisis. And I thought that was particularly well-done and, and useful. And that too is distributed to the board. I would say that what we need to do as a board, though, is we need to move to suspend your committee's activity. We, you know, no, no offense to anybody, we can't have committees deciding they're not going to do their, their work. So I circulated earlier today to, to the board, sort of adopting the language of your motion, a motion that would in fact suspend your committee's work, as you indicated. And also that motion would allow the suspension to be reactivated by the select board. And in your memorandum, you'd indicated that you will be periodically meeting to try to make a good judgment about when that might be. And of course, as soon as you're ready to do that, I would just encourage you to get back to me. And we'll get her on the very next select board meeting so you can get right back to work. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to extend my gratitude and thanks for all the work you've done to shepherd us through this very difficult time with a very important project for the town. So without further questions, Linda, if I could ask you, you have it available to read the motion?
Move to suspend the work of the Middle School Building Committee upon the production of preliminary feasibility report prior to proceeding with the schematic design phase of the project. The work of the committee will remain suspended until reactivated by the select board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the court please call a roll?
Ms. Hodgson? You're muted?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
A note that it passes unanimously. Thank you all very much for coming this afternoon and sharing your thinking with us, which I appreciate.
Thank you for the time, we appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is a Jero project discussion.
I'm going to take off.
Is that something you're going to lead with, Stephen, or is that something Kate is?
Well, just, just briefly, during this kind of uncertain time, a lot of town work has been paused. But there are a few key things that, that we've tried to continue to advance, mostly because we were in the middle, like the middle school. We were kind of in the middle of a process, working with consultants and, and, you know, trying to get through permitting and things like that. So we'd be ready, hopefully when we come out of this soon. And Jero is one of those projects that, that has been moving forward. And I just wanted to give the board an update on it, or have Kate give an update on the project and kind of talk through where we, where we're going with it and the timing and just let you all know where, where it stands. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. I'm going to share my screen. Did that show up for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So like Stephen said, I'm, I'm here at his request to provide an update on the project. I believe there was a concern about, you know, unilaterally deciding either that all large-scale projects stop or continue. And so it's really just up for discussion right now. Unlike the middle school building, we're quite a bit farther along with this. As a matter of fact, we are past the design, past feasibility and past most of the permitting, other than the NRC. And so I am hopeful that with this update, you all would agree that progress for this project, which is now three years basically in the making, is both essential and timely. Much of the project beforehand has been in the planning and design phases. So until this point, nobody's really seen on a, on the wide scale, sort of where we are. So I'm pleased to be able to bring you our progress. So it's a complicated property. It's wooded, it's close to water, immediately adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And so it took an extended amount of time to do survey, wetlands delineation, and to be able to flag all of the buffer zones, including the no-build 25, 50 and 100-foot lines. And then, of course, everyone will recall that we also subdivided out a small portion, but a little less than a quarter of an acre for housing. And so when we're eventually able to have town meeting, you'll notice that there's some funds in there and they're going to be ready to take on this, that project as well. So that'll be great. So a careful approach was needed to ensure that we were able to maximize the use of the property while maintaining the natural woodscape that was consistent with what the community had said that they wanted. But the trickiest part was ensuring that we had ADA compliant pathways without having to cut down into the property too much. The natural slope provided by the property is both beautiful and very, very difficult for planning. I've experienced quite a few plac, plannings in, in my time, having worked in the field, you know, for about 15 years or so before I came to Concord. And this, this is by far the most difficult project park-wise that, that I've had. So my team and I continue to hear from frustrated townspeople who'd like to access the property and are just made that in their opinion, we haven't made any noticeable progress. So I'm, I'm hopeful that being able to put a shovel in the ground, so to speak, would, would be helpful. Here you can see the final schematics that we have for Phase 1, which includes walking paths, the woodland trails, the composting toilet and barn or pavilion, which is a three-season facility and a structure that, you know, we can basically use for all kinds of community events or small rentals for, for folks. This plan and the accompanying 350-plus page data sheets and application are actually going to be heard by the Natural Resources Commission next Wednesday. And pending that discussion, there might be minor modifications that are needed. But essentially, the plan that you're looking at is, is what is going to come to pass. We hope to begin the process for earthwork and site improvements by August 1st. This here shows you a closer view of what we're calling the hub of the park. Here located nearly at the center of the property and far away from the 100 buffer zone, it has a complex with a composting restroom, benches, a bike repair station and native plantings as well, as well as several seen and unseen stormwater management. The most exciting, at least from a recreational and community perspective, is the addition of a three-season post and beam barn. Immediately adjacent to the restrooms, this community space will be available for programs and more importantly, for residents to be able to rent or lease for small family gatherings. It's surrounded by windows on all sides and you can have a view of both the woodlands and the pond. We hope it'll make people feel like they're far away from civilization, even when they're just right down the street. We will be presenting the plan to NRC, as I said, on May 20th, and they'll evaluate the work within these particular buffer zones, which are highlighted here. Due to the pandemic and because town meeting has been delayed, we tabled the construction efforts related to White Pond. We continue to work on the design and the stormwater management plan and the soil testing. But we were likely not begin any construction until the spring of 2020. but we were likely not begin any construction until the spring of 2021, after we're able to know if the fiscal year 21 capital budget will pass as is or if there are modifications. That being said, I know when we had the initial budget hearings, we were talking about running these projects simultaneously. And again, like I said, we've decided to back off from that and wait until after we have town meeting to pick that up. So we'll do all the pre-planning work associated with White Pond, because we've already signed a contract with a vendor to do that. But we'll stop there and wait until the following year. So that project is about nine months or so delayed. With that, we're able to focus on getting Phase One of the Giraud completed with the money that we have in borrowing authorizations. It was already approved by the past three fiscal years. And so all told, we have an available balance of about 1.4 million. It will be important, as the governor announces the phases and parameters for the reopening, that we're able to provide places where people can enjoy the outdoors safely. I think there was a lot of community excitement about this particular parcel, just its proximity to Bruce Freeman. And as the town manager mentioned earlier, the Phase 2B construction project will be beginning. And it's great to be able to capitalize on those projects being bid and worked on at the same time. 2B, just for the record, in case people don't know, is this phase right here, as well as the phase that comes over the Route 2. So as you can see, as construction is happening here, it makes sense that it's also happening in this area. And lastly, I wanted to point out a couple of things. And one is that I was listening to the speakers before, and I know that building and those type of large-scale school construction projects, the state is still waiting to come in on sort of what the cost out would be or how that's affected. We are not seeing that trend in earthwork in parks. We're actually seeing quite a positive trend, and I think it's because work has slowed. And so we were originally expecting that these phases, initial Phase One, were going to come in somewhere between 1.4 and 1.6. And in working with both the consultants on GPI and then others regarding the White Pond, you know, sort of just asking the question, how have you seen trends? There was a similar project adjacent to water out in, closer to the city. And their expectation was it was going to be a $1.6 million project, and it came in at 1.2. So the savings was rather significant. And so I also think, at least for me, putting on the social services hat, the ability to provide work for local construction and building companies, who primarily are the ones that have bid at least in the last five years on our park projects, is really appealing, and it's almost as appealing as the project itself, given that we already have the funds and the authorization in place, and they're borrowing and therefore not impactful to the general fund. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Unshare your screen. I can't see, but just a few people. Thank you. So is there any questions from the board? I have one question. When would the RFPs or whatever, if I got the wrong language, when would they be sent out?
By, we're hoping by August 1st that the bid package would be sent out. And so we're talking about collecting them in September. And so capitalizing a little bit on the fall to do some initial earthwork and then finishing up in the spring.
Okay. And again, just for the record, I know, I think you said this, but these are funds that have already been allocated and approved, right?
Yes.
By the town?
Yes.
Jane?
I wanted to find out how the schedule of dredging the pond fits into this. Because as you said, you know, White Pond's been suspended. So thinking about water use available to Concord citizens, I just wanted to get a sense of that.
Sure. So Marcia Rasbuis, and I see her name on the screen, so she's here. And I know that that's an NRC project, so she can correct me if I'm wrong. But there's money that we need to have town meeting authorize. And of course, that hasn't happened yet. And so much like White Pond, I think we might have a slight delay, but I don't see the delay being such that because the Giraud project is going to basically start and then be dormant through the winter months unless we have a really great winter, and then pick back up again. I think that the two are likely to complement one another, but there's also some other money that is going to be needed for the dredging in future years. And so we're not quite at the point where that project is shovel-ready. We're sort of building the kitty in order to be able to do it. But I think the thought is, Marcia can correct me, that, you know, that project would be undertaken after Giraud Phase One is complete.
Okay.
Do you want to comment?
She is absolutely correct. We're waiting for CPC funding, and we didn't receive all that we had anticipated in this year's allocation. So we still need to file an additional request to the Community Preservation Committee.
That's okay. She said she's absolutely right, which I never get tired of hearing.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Terry?
I just wonder if we could go back to that last slide. Walk us through that for a minute. That looked, had a lot of good detail about schedule.
Mr. Lawson, can I share my screen again? Yeah. Can you see that? Is it this one with the timetables?
Yes.
Great. So as I said, we were expecting, this 2.1 is reflective of the barn building. And that isn't included in this Phase One, because 200,000 of that was going to be taken from the recreation revolving. And given that they've been shut down for a number of months and the uncertainty of what's going to happen as far as their summer camp programs, that would be Phase 1B and would have to be bid separate from the earthwork, because those are different types of constructions. So that tips the public works construction, which is sort of the vertical versus the horizontal construction. So, but we wanted to be transparent, to say everything that you see on the plan, this is what it costs. But we're really working on the first, you know, 1.4, where we can get in and have a park and composting toilets.
All right. Let me ask if there are any other questions from the board?
Would you like me to stop sharing?
Unless somebody needs it to be up. I don't see any hands, but yes, please, if you could stop sharing. All right. Well, thank you, Kate, very much for coming and sharing that with us. And we'll look forward to an update from you when you're ready to present.
Okay. So just, is the board comfortable with moving forward?
Is there any objection by the board? I have none. I don't see any. So thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. I'll work with the town manager. Appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is the update on the 1/12 spending plan. And so I suspect that Stephen and Carrie.
Yes, sorry. So we started talking about this last week. Certainly now that the decision about putting town meeting after June 30th has been effectively made. The state has, under new legislation, allowed municipalities to operate on 1/12, meaning your FY '20 appropriations divided by 12 and use that each month. We've engaged in a planning process, both Carrie and I, working with Jared Stanton and Dr. Laurie Hunter from the schools, to make sure we understand that there are some provisions that are unique to this. And, you know, you have to submit a monthly budget and get it approved in advance. So it's not just a free rein type thing. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to update the board on where that planning process is. And I'll turn it over to Carrie for that.
Thank you, Stephen. Did you want to share the plan at all or just talk through it? Did you want to share anything on the screen?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you have a visual, that would work well.
Okay.
So while she's setting that up, this, I should say that this is not completely set. There's a number of discussions that we have to have about what we were thinking about doing, you know, in July, August, and September. And, you know, some things that would in normal times move forward, but maybe now won't, especially since a lot of our plans were anticipating April 27th being the start of town meeting and having appropriations in hand, and that obviously hasn't happened. So this is a, fair to say it's a draft.
So what we've done is we've just put a document together that's very similar to what you would see in the town warrant. We know that there will be a specific form that the Department of Revenue will require, but as of now, they haven't identified what that form would be. So on a, if you look at our budget, a 1/12 expenditure is roughly $4 million per year. That works well for a lot of departments. So for most of the line items, you know, we've just estimated 1/12 of the expenditures in any given month. But we do have a number of items that we pay upfront. And the reason we pay things upfront, like a retirement assessment or premiums for property and liability insurance, is because we take substantial discounts in doing so. In some cases, we've been able to work out where we would be able to pay monthly and not lose the discount. For instance, the retirement assessment, the retirement board has indicated that it will be willing to accept a 1/12 payment for July, August, and September, with the understanding that come October 1st, we would pay the remaining amount that is owed. But our insurances, property liability insurance, we have not approached the provider yet. But so we've put this together with the assumption that we would need to be paying 100% of those upfront. Obviously, any debt service that we have coming due in July, August, and September would also need to be paid. So down here, and I'm happy with the town manager's approval to send this over to you so you can take a look at it in more detail at your leisure. But here's for the month of July, we're estimating our expenditures are 4.3 million. August, we're down to about 2.9 million. And the difference is in July, we're making some of those payments. We have higher debt service obligations in July. So August, a much lower expenditure. But then in September, where we have significant debt service payments, we're up to $6.1 million. So at this point, I think we're in very good position to be able to submit this request to the Department of Revenue. They've indicated that they will be opening up the portal on June 1st. So I'm sure that we have much more work to do. We have not assumed any increases in personnel costs unless we are contractually obligated already to do that. So we do have, I believe, just one union that has a contract that extends into fiscal '21. So we obviously have to honor those increases. But we will not be submitting for permission to increase any additional salaries, because we won't yet have a budget adopted by town meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let me ask the board if they have any questions for Carrie, Stephen?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
Lynda?
Yeah, Carrie, just one question. I know this was talked about, the recent finance public, one of the finance committee public hearings. But does this assume contribution from free cash of 1 million towards taxes?
So the way the tax, the property tax bills work is we actually can only take what we levied in the prior fiscal year and increase that by 2.5%, because we won't have a budget. So the only thing that we can do under the law is take last year's, inflate that by 2.5%. And unfortunately, that means that any adjustments above that are borne solely on the third and fourth quarter. Now, we have posed this question to our representative at the Department of Revenue. But I think at this point, we're really just looking at bills being 2.5% higher than the fourth quarter bill for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
If the budget were to be approved, or if all of the spending articles were to be approved the way that they're presented in the warrant, which is probably not likely, the estimated property tax increase was 2.86%. So by increasing the bills 2.5%, we're really not going to be that far off of where we were or what we would have done had town meeting already happened and the budgets were approved.
Thank you.
And Carrie, I'm just recalling from reading the material, it's some briefings that the legislation says that you can spend no less than 1/12. And so I guess the question is, given what I understand from you to be our capacity, are there things we could be prepaying earlier in the fiscal year that because of the ability to spend more than 1/12, that might give us a little slack later on?
I don't believe, there isn't anything that we could prepay at a discount that we wouldn't have already taken advantage of.
Okay, so no additional opportunities for saving?
Right.
And again, my recollection of the legislation is that the plan has to be approved by the select board. So just interested in the timing of when you think a final document will be ready to bring back to the board so that it can approve it and it could be sent on.
So I would say the document that we have right now is 90% ready, if not hotter. I think we probably would like to just potentially wait until we see what the format is that the Department of Revenue is going to request. So what we present to you, in addition to being the numbers that we're going to present, would be in the correct format. So you would know exactly what you were approving.
Okay. Well, we greatly appreciate all the work that was done to get this document prepared so that we'll be prepared as a town to continue to maintain the level of services that our residents have come to expect. And you'll just let us know when you want it back on the select board as an agenda item so that we can address it. Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you very much, Carrie. The next item on our agenda is reopening town operations. Stephen?
Thanks. So I just wanted to, I asked the chairman to put this on the agenda, mostly just to let the board and the community know that we are actively engaged in internal conversations and external conversations, meaning talking to people at the state, talking to our peers in other communities, and obviously monitoring the orders that are coming from the governor to think about how are we going to go through this process? And so I just wanted to give the board kind of a snapshot into what that thought process is right now. I don't think it would, I don't think it's going to surprise anybody here to know that the questions vastly outnumber the answers as we sit here now. And not the least of which is, you know, are the limitations on gatherings of 10 or more going to be in effect? You know, are non-essential businesses going to remain closed? You know, obviously, the mask orders, we expect, and we now realize that that's going to be a part of it going forward. So, you know, I think one of the things that, a couple of initiatives that we've undertaken is I've appointed a task force of mid-level managers and supervisors to kind of do, the first thing they're going to do is develop an employee survey. kind of do, the first thing they're going to do is we're, is develop a employee survey. And so we're going to kind of take the, take the temperature, if you will, of, of town employees on how they feel like this new work environment has gone, what's worked, what hasn't, you know, are there technologies that they're aware of that we could adopt that will make it easier to telework because we do expect telework to be a part of our workplace model for the foreseeable future. And I say that because you know, town facilities are, are built and many of them, you know, people were sitting closer than six feet apart and are, will that be something that will be safe and even allowable? And so how do we manage our offices so people can stay socially distant? But also continue to, to serve the, the needs of the public in person. I, I will say like, you know, I made the comment about Zoom earlier. It's amazing how when, when we just, when we had to, the town operations were really able to find ways to continue providing full levels of service with reduced staffing levels, meaning reduced staffing capacity, because it is not as easy or efficient to do some things remotely as it is if we're sitting inside the office. But we've still, I think, powered through a lot of that. So we're looking at our workspaces, we are looking at our custodial practices. We, you know, right, right now, I think in fact, when I presented the budget, I think I talked about this, how we were consolidating building maintenance line items under the facilities department, but custodial services, we were leaving out because several buildings had different arrangements for custodial services. Now, I think this is a time where we really need to rethink that. And because we're going to have, I think, different protocols and standards and needs for cleaning and sanitation. So that's an example of, of an operational change that we're, we're heavily exploring. We've already ordered plexiglass dividers for counters to be ready when we have to engage with customers. We're going to have a discussion about how often do we need to be open for the public to walk in? How many places do we need to offer walk-in service? I'll give you an example, the library has 10 service desks. I think when, when the library resumes operations, there's going to be far fewer of that because each, each place where you interface with a customer, you need, you do, you need some kind of screening. Employees are going to have masks, potentially gloves, you need to have hand sanitizers that, that's, you know, at those stations and, and so we're going to need to really economize a lot of that. So you know, those are the types of things we're looking at. Obviously, we're looking at the cost and revenues, the, the money from CARES Act does not replace lost revenues. It just, it just reimburses you for expenses that were new. And I think they're working on getting that changed, but that's a key distinction because a lot of what's going to drive our budget decision-making is going to be the loss of local receipts and other, and state aid that, that will have a meaningful impact. And, and as a part of this one twelfth budget development, Kerry and I have been actively engaged in looking at where we can save money to, to make sure that we can absorb those impacts from, from lost revenue. We still don't know about childcare and summer camps. Those are things that really are going to rely on the governor's guidance. And like I said, I hope to have some more of that Monday. In terms of parks, playgrounds, facilities, the, like I said, the order on 10 or more people is still in effect by the governor and as, as the board knows, before we closed those facilities, there was constantly groups of 10 or more congregating often with sometimes limited attention paid to social distancing and now face covering. And so it's, while I think, I think everyone here wants to reopen them and wants to give people the opportunity to get out and play tennis and, you know, run around the track at Emerson and, you know, open our pools, do all that stuff. The data shows that it still may not be safe to do that. And we're still under orders that I think reopening those facilities would violate. But again, these are the things that, that we need to, that we are actively considering. And I say active, I mean, almost on a daily basis, we are trying to talk things through. So we're, we're going to do, we're going to do an employee survey. We are looking at our technology resources. And like I said, I have a task force of, of mid-level employees that are going to help us to, you know, figure out what, what can we look like as an organization and, and how can we function operationally in a way that accomplishes the number one goal, which is keeping both employees and residents safe from further spread of COVID-19, which I think by all accounts, we expect to be around for a while to come. So I just, like I said, I don't have a lot of specifics. Unfortunately, I just wanted to communicate to the board that we are thinking about it and I'm happy to have you ask questions and I can tell you where our thought process is on, on individual things, but the highlights are the workspaces, costs and, you know, hygiene, cleaning, sanitation, things like that.
All right. Does the board have questions for the town manager on this issue? Jane?
I just wanted to thank Stephen and everybody in town services in, in the town because I know especially as the weather gets nice like today, I've seen people out in places all over. And I don't blame anybody. We're all itchy. We're all past itchy. And it's a, it's a thankless task to be the one that has to remind everybody what's in our own best interest when most people are getting a little tired of it. So thank you. And, you know, we're, as a, as a select board member, I'm here to, to help enforce or at least help model whenever possible. Thanks.
Right. Before we move on, I'm afraid I did have a question about the one twelfth spending that just got by me. And Kerry, that has to do with what about enterprise funds?
So that's a, that's a great question, Mike. Most of our enterprise funds actually don't function under the enterprise fund statute. So you might recall from town meeting, the, for the light plant, for instance, the motion is asking town meeting to approve the expenditure of all of the monies that come into that fund on an annual basis. So there's no, while we put together a budget for the light plant, for water sewer and solid waste, there's no town meeting budget that's approved. So we don't believe that the one twelfth spending legislation applies to those enterprise funds. It does however, apply to BD, which operates under the enterprise fund statute. So BD will also have to be submitting a one twelfth spending plan to be approved by the Department of Revenue.
And that'll have to be approved by the board as well.
I guess that would be my assumption. We would need to, to look into that further, but we'll definitely have an answer when it comes time to put that before you.
And so what, so the light plant, for example, can just go ahead and spend whatever it feels like spending? I don't mean that in a cavalier way, but.
We, we believe that they would be authorized to expend according to the budget that they put together without any town meeting approval or Department of Revenue, select board, Department of Revenue approval under the one twelfth legislation. I hesitate to say that because I know the Department of Revenue doesn't want to hear that they don't like that we operate, operate those enterprise funds that way, but they are grandfathered i- in the form that they operate.
Well, perhaps a sordid for another day. All right. The next item on our agenda is update, a town meeting update. Madam Moderator?
Hi there. As Stephen alluded to, we have at, at the board's last meeting come to the conclusion that the best decision for the town would be to delay town meeting certainly until the end of July, but if possible into September. And the reasons for that are the public health risk that we're still facing, the uncertainty we have about what the best measures are for protecting public health if we do have a town meeting gathering. And, and also the uncertainty with respect to economics and finances, which make it very difficult for the town, the schools and the finance committee to make appropriate recommendations to town meeting and to bring appropriate articles to town meetings. So that's where we are. However, because we are operating under limited authority under Massachusetts statute, we may only move our already posted town meeting warrant 30 days at a time for a public health, safety or weather emergency. Currently, our town meeting has been recessed and continued to May 22nd. Sometime next week, I will issue another declaration to move the meeting until June 22nd. We've had some conversation with town council about this and their recommendation is that we don't move the meeting again until the first of June. At that point, the first of June, we would move the meeting another 30 days. And put it into July because it would be moved from its June 22nd date. And that would then put the town in a position to submit the one twelfth budget to the Department of Revenue because that budget can't be submitted, the emergency expense expenditure budget until such time as we have actually moved our town meeting past June 30th. And the other parameter that we're working within, in addition to being able to do this only in 30-day increments is the potential that the governor will lift the state of emergency. In which case, we would have to hold town meeting within 30 days of whatever date the governor lifts the state of emergency. I'm interested in Stephen's thoughts on this, but it seems to me that it's unlikely we're going to see a wholesale lifting of that state of emergency anytime soon. It seems to me more, we're more likely to see incremental changes in it so that we'd still have something you could appropriately term a state of emergency as declared by the governor. Does that seem right to you, Stephen?
I, I would agree. Carmen, I think so many of, so many of the new rules, if you will, so many of the, of the, of the things we're operating under are tied to the state of emergency that if it, it was lifted. I mean, it, I mean, we'd all be, the, the operationally, towns would be thrown into chaos. And I think there would be a public health component that would be, or that would be severe because the mask orders, the social distancing, the closure of bars and restaurants, all that stuff is, is predicated by the state of emergency. And so I, I just, I, I simply don't see that happening. I do agree with you. It, it would stay modified. The town also has a state of emergency in place as well. If we continue, I do think if we continue to see conditions locally be destabilizing, then the, then I think the Board of Health and the select board could, could extend the local order. But I agree with you. I think, and, and I, I, I believe that the governor would give communities at least a month's notice if he was, if he was thinking in that way, because so many things would have to be rewired.
Okay. Okay. So that, that, that's the timing. Those are the timing issues with respect to town meeting. The process issues are, are an entirely different matter. I think we can, I think it's safe to say that whatever town meeting looks like, it's not going to be what people are used to. And we're going to have to have all kinds of provisions to protect public health and safety. And we're still waiting. We, we hope to have some advice from the State Department of Public Health, specifically for town meetings. I've heard a rumor that that might be coming out sometime next week. We'll be all keenly interested in what the state advises. I know that some, some towns are doing their meetings outside, some are discussing doing their meetings in multiple indoor locations with social distancing. There has been discussion in some towns about doing town meeting in the style of an old fashioned drive-in movie where people stay in their cars. And as, as a matter of fact, we just received a suggestion from one of our past vendors who has supplied audiovisual equipment to the town for annual town meeting that he is doing a town meeting like that for a couple of our neighboring towns. And he's got a giant blow-up screen, like a drive-in movie screen, and he's got people in their cars and he has rigged up some kind of mechanism by which people can dial in their comments or questions from their cell phone and have them queued up for the moderator to recognize them and they would go directly to the audio on the screen. It's kind of hard for me to believe all this will work seamlessly. And I have no idea what it might cost. And I'm waiting for more guidance to come from the State Department of Public Health. I don't see any particular reason for us to be the first guinea pigs to figure out how best to do this. And for example, that specific arrangement with the cars and the giant screen and the telephones, I'd like to see that work somewhere before we embark on it. But I will be soliciting your input as well as the fire chiefs and the police chiefs and Susan Rask, our director of public health. And I've invited the League of Women Voters and the town, the, the chairs of the various boards and committees in town to send me their thoughts about what, what would make them comfortable or, or not comfortable. And we'll try to find something that's not only protective of public health, but also comfortable for folks that will impinge on the ability of people to participate as little as possible. But it's going to be a problem. There, it's going to be a compromise. And I, I don't see any way around that. Stephen, yeah?
As I say, Mike, I, I think to, to build on Carmen's point, the other part, there's a couple of smaller aspects is because of the, of the school districts, some of what we do with our town meeting depend, is connected to what Carlisle does. And we're engaging them in a conversation next week to see how much we can sync up with what they're thinking in hours. That will be, and I think an important discussion to kind of see if we can get on the same page. And the other part of this is, you know, not only is town meeting not going to be, I, I, I would imagine timing's not going to be in the format that Concordians have become accustomed to. I also think the warrant, the, the items in the warrant, not the least of which is the annual budget and capital plan are going to need to be revised before town meeting. In some cases, perhaps significantly, we don't, we don't really know yet because of the uncertainty about revenues and state aid. So as a part of this planning process, we are looking at, like I said, offsets we can make. You know, I'll give the example of, I'll, I'll give the example of, of cash capital. If we have a meeting in September and authorize the cash capital that we had proposed back for April, and then we're going to have another town meeting in April, are we really going to have this, the time to execute those projects before we get the next round? And, you know, so those are the types of things that, and we're going to need time to figure that out. So then we can present town meeting voters with, you know, very new ideas that weren't tied up in the, in the warrant when it went to the, when it went to the printer.
I just want to make a, a quick comment, Stephen, because you indicated correctly, of course, that the town has its own state of emergency in effect, but but if the governor would lift his state of emergency, I don't think the town's state of emergency gives the moderator any authority to continue to postpone town meeting. Am I correct, Carmen? Do you know?
That is how I would read the statute, Micah, because the statute states specifically that we can continue town meeting once it's been posted in 30-day increments. But we have to hold it. If it's public health, we have to, we have to hold the meeting within 30 days of, of the day that the governor lists the state of emergency. That's specifically in the statute. But I, I have to say, I very much agree with Stephen. I just don't think that, I don't think the governor is going to pull out the rug from I just don't think that, I don't think the governor is going to pull out the rug from under us because we're, every community in the state is in the same boat.
All right, any additional questions for the town moderator from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much, Carmen. The next item on our agenda is acting on a recommendation from our Ceremonies Committee to cancel the Memorial Day events at Ride Out Field in Monument Square. So is there any comment or question about this item? Seeing none, Linda?
Move to cancel the Memorial Day events at Ride Out Field in Monument Square.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is letter in opposition to the hunt plan. We discussed this briefly at our last meeting. I think we thank the Julia, Kay, and Jane for their input in getting this draft letter to us. I hope you've all had a chance to review it. Are there any comments or questions about it? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this letter.
Move to authorize the chair to send a letter to the Wildlife Refuge Complex Manager at the Eastern Massachusetts Wildlife Refuge Complex in opposition to the recent U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service proposal to expand hunting opportunities at the Great Meadows National Wildlife Refuge.
For a second.
Second.
Clark, please call a roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
I note for the record, it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is miscellaneous correspondence. We continue to receive correspondence. And in particular, I would note that we received a couple of letters in connection with the item that we just, that we just approved, sort of supporting that move. The next item on our agenda is, we're sort of returning this, we've not been doing it for a number of weeks during these times. But added back now are public comments. And before I ask for public comments, I'll say that when we resume our next select board meeting, which will be next Thursday at the same time, we'll begin to add back in liaison reports. So you might be prepared for those of you that are, your committees are meeting to bring us up to date. And I would also add that I had a very successful chair's breakfast meeting on yesterday, Wednesday morning. It was very refreshing to hear from all of the committee chairs, although most of them hadn't been meeting. And we sort of agreed that rather than wait a month, we might again meet in two weeks just to try to keep everybody informed. So with, any further, Stephen?
I didn't know if you if you decided to do the APWA proclamation. Oh, okay.
I'm going to do it after we hear from the public.
Okay.
I am going to do it. All right, if there are any public comments, I'd be more than happy to entertain them. Carlin?
Carlin Reed, 83, Witten. Thank you very much for allowing public comments. I appreciate it. I do have a question. I know that you have the Memorial Day being canceled. What about the July picnic in the park? Have you made a decision on that for the Fourth of July?
No, we haven't. At least I haven't heard anything, Stephen.
I think I received a notice that that had been canceled as well, but I mean, not by us, I think the organizer canceled that event. I believe that's the case.
Not an official town event.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any additional comments from folks? I don't see any hands. If I'm not seeing, and you want to speak, just unmute yourself and start talking. Seeing none, then although it wasn't on the agenda, I'm going to take the liberty of having it be an item that was I did not know about. And that is that a proclamation, I did circulate it, copy to the board, proclamation in support of Concord Public Works Week. And so if there is no objection to this, I would move that we adopt this proclamation. And if it's adopted, I would be pleased to read it. So is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Linda, would you please call a roll?
So move and Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Whereas public work services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday life and quality of life, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, engineering, streets, highways, solid waste, and recycling parks, athletic fields, fleet maintenance, and cemeteries. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of Concord greatly depends on these services and facilities. Whereas the planning, design, construction, and care of these facilities are dependent upon the effort, skill, and commitment of the Concord Public Works team. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated Concord Public Works team members is materially influenced by the citizens' understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, we as the Select Board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through May 23, 2020, as Concord Public Works Week and call upon all Concordians to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions which Concord Public Works makes to every day, to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. We proclaim this on the 14th day of May, 2020. So I extend our gratitude and thanks to our Public Works folks for all they do to keep us safe and well.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to do, well, first of all, I do want to share that gratitude to the Public Works Department. CPW is a great department and in this uncertain time, they really have done a great job staying at it. But I left something out of my town manager's update that I wanted to convey, actually, two things. One, we did receive a grant award for Bruce Freeman Rail Trail 2C. So even after 2B is done, that work will continue. But the other thing is, as you know, we've been continuing work on Cambridge Turnpike. And as a part of one of the next upcoming to-dos, they're going to be taking the overhead wires, especially for broadband, our local broadband, and putting them into the conduit. That's going to yield a service disruption for about 100 customers that I, that I know, that I know Dave Wood and his team are working hard to make sure they do a lot of outreach to the neighbors. But I just want to let folks know that that's a, they're going to try and do it over a weekend as well. The concept of what a weekend is seems to, seems to have lost meaning lately, but they're going to work with them, care with the people. But I just want to put it out there that it's a big effort to do that, switch it over. And so there will be service disruptions for people in the area of the Cambridge Turnpike.
Do they know how long the interruption might be?
I think they're only hoping, I think, depending on how the splicing goes, there's a lot of splicing involved. And I think if things go well, it could be a day or less. If things go bad, it could extend a little bit more. But I think it's, that's, that's obviously complicated work. I know that they know that they need to get it done as fast as humanly possible to minimize the disruption. Especially, they understand the times where people are really, you know, the internet is truly a lifeline for folks. So I just want to let people know that's happening.
Thank you. So are there any last comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, Linda?
Move to adjourn.
Roll.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
It passes unanimously, thank you all very much. We'll see you very soon, stay well.